To order, November 7, 2018. Link, please read the roll.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Proll?
Here.
Mr. Vonick?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Here.
Chairman Simpson?
May I have a motion to excuse Chairman Simpson, please?
I'll move.
Link, can you read the roll, please?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the motions summary of the planning commission meeting held on October 17, 2018, as recorded and transcribed.
Motion to approve.
First by Mr. Proll, second by Mr. Halter.
Second.
Link, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Third item on tonight's agenda is regular business. Link, could you please read the first item?
Item A, Bell Commons, case 1, 2018-1968. Request by McCapa LLC for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for Bell Commons on approximately 1.344 acres on property zone R3, one-family residential district, and located on the north side of Bell Avenue and the east side of Liberty Road. Case 2, 2018-1969, a request by McCapa LLC for approval of a final subdivision plat for Bell Commons on approximately 1.344 acres on property zone R3, one-family residential district, and located on the north side of Bell Avenue and the east side of Liberty Road.
All right, who's tonight's presenter?
I have it. George, this site is zoned R3, as are all the properties adjacent and surrounding the site. There's single-family houses to the east and south of this. This is a pretty straightforward by-right subdivision for four lots they're proposing on this site. This is the area where you can see there's some trees out there that would need to be, if they're removed, they'd have to be replaced for our tree preservation code. This is the four lots that they're proposing. From an engineering drawing perspective, they have to submit some minimal engineering for this site because there's no extension of any public road or utilities to this site. They have to provide stormwater drawings for engineer review. Access to each of these outlots, each lot or each lot will have a curb cut from Bell Avenue. From a pedestrian connectivity perspective, each, as each lot is, each house is built on these lots, they'd have to put a sidewalk in front of the, each lot per our code. As you can see, the pretty straightforward layout. The lots are just over 15,000 square feet. They're 68 by 225. Each house would have to achieve compliance with our residential district requirements in Chapter 1134 and Chapter 1171, the residential design standards. Landscaping, each house would have to meet our landscaping requirements. They would be reviewed administratively when the building permits were submitted. As I indicated, a tree, any trees removed would have, any trees larger than six inches in caliber would have to be replaced per our tree code, and that would occur also with, at the building permit level, supplemental. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plat with seven conditions and the final subdivision plat with seven conditions. You have to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. Number one, just to note that any of the sidewalks here would have to be within the right-of-way or within an easement grant to, to the city for sidewalk purposes. I think that's been made clear to the applicant before, but just to put that on the record. And then, just to encourage the applicant, we have been working with them for quite some time. The whole area is zoned R3 residential, as Lance indicated, but encourage the applicant to, we appreciate, and it's their right, to move forward with just this portion of it. We acknowledge that, but encourage them to look at the balance of the 9.5 acres or so for potentially looking at an appropriate transition use from heavy industry across Liberty to the single-family lots in the future would be at least desirable from, I think, my perspective. We've had good conversations over the last couple of years about that. I think the infrastructure costs are just proving maybe too high at this point in time, but would still like to see that come forward at some point in time. Obviously, we don't have the authority to just make you do that, but just encouraging you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just curiosity, there's a number of feet of guard rail appears to have to be removed and a new terminal put on. Is that developer's responsibility, the city's, or what's policy?
Yeah, we've discussed that with the developer, and I believe that, maybe they can refresh my memory when they come forward, but in one of our meetings, that was specifically brought up. And where that guard rail terminates would have to be trimmed back, as you say, to accommodate the driveway. But I believe the location would still be such that that could still be an appropriate terminus for that guard rail, and there would be no need to extend it further east past the driveway.
I'm asking who's paying for it, I guess. Are, is the city responsible to do that?
That would be, the city would not be responsible, but if that, if and when that westernmost lot developed, that would have to be done by the home builder to accommodate that driveway.
And does that need to be a condition? Because I didn't see it listed.
It's within the right-of-way, and it would be like any other improvement for this subdivision, be the developer's responsibility, not be a responsibility. So I don't think, you can add an extra condition if you like. I'm not worried about that. It's been discussed, so. At your, at your pleasure.
Mr. Badger, you feel that that would be something you'd want to include?
I really don't think so. I think the administration probably would handle that, but I was just curious.
It's mentioned in the report that they have to do, but it wasn't a condition.
I missed that then, I apologize. I didn't see it.
Looking at your subdivision plat, to the north of those four lots, it looks like there's a, three lots. There's a 3272, 73, and 74. What's, what could happen with those bitty, bitty little lots? And I don't know if that's a question for staff or the developer.
I defer that to the surveyor, because that's interesting. We've had that discussion before.
Okay.
My name is Lynn McKeever.
Excuse me, would you like to come forward and state your name and address for the record? Is there any other, are there any other questions from staff, for staff at this time?
And the quick answer, while I sit down to, Mr. Chairman, from my perspective, is those lots are not buildable.
Okay.
They, for a lot of reasons. One, they might be small, but number two, they don't, they're front of vacated, they're in front of streets. So a street would have to be provided to those lots.
Like to have a seat and state your name and address, and then may have additional questions for you.
My name's Lynn McKeever. McKeever and Associates, in B.S.A.R.S., and Jim Allman is the other gentleman back there with the facilitator of the project. We have, actually, since the street has already been vacated just to the north of those small parcels, that we would envision in the future, it would be all consolidated into lots together with the vacated right-of-way that already exists and the lots to the north of that. Because there is, like you said, there's no road access to those.
That was the original plan we were working on, except not for residential, but for appropriate transition use.
So then eventually, you will be in for a replat?
Yeah, it would be the intent to see what happens and transpires.
Could be rezoning from residential to something else, where it's more appropriate use. It could be just subdivision and a replat, I'd say, with subdivision.
It could be a lot consolidation also.
Could be that.
Right.
And that's why in our staff report, we remarked that, as you see these, they're, if you were very, very creative about it, and you might wind up with some, I'll use very technical terms, funky lots here. You could probably replat this in a way that leaves you with the same number of lots, and you wouldn't necessarily even be going through this process. That's just an administrative by-right kind of process. However, in this case, it made sense, given the history of what we talked about, that it made sense to go ahead and do, the cleanest way is to do this subdivision for these four lots. They have it by right, and they're allowed to do that. And it establishes, you know, it'll make the other lot lines that you see underneath there go away, and these would be the new lots as well. And they obviously conform, morally conform to the R3 district requirements.
Any other questions or concerns for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So from what you've heard and what's been discussed, what's the wish of the commission this evening?
Do we need comments from the audience?
Thank you. Anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward, please come forward and state your name and address for the record? Sorry about that.
Good evening. My name is Tom Romo, Delaware, Delaware, and live at 272 Hartstone Drive in Delaware. And I'm going to bring up, neither of you directly in the, in the review of the planning commission, but it is definitely, but then, something that City Council should discuss, and the community as a whole. I have two papers in front of me. One is a statement, brief statement that I'm going to read, the other one is an additional statement by a, whoops, I messed it. I messed it up. Another citizen resident here in Delaware, Anna Willow, who is in Columbus tonight and cannot come. So let me read my statement, and I'll pass copies to everyone. Okay, and I didn't catch the way that the company is pronounced. Is it McKeever, McKeever? I have no idea. Whatever, the company is proposing a rezoning amendment for Bell Commons on approximately 12.3 acres at the northeast corner of Liberty Road and Bell Avenue. Tonight, we're only talking about one plastic, but the, 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 the shady convention on which I'm a member has seen collectively as, as, as part. They propose housing development with adjacent to Liberty Casting. Large M2 manufacturing, with an extensive track, record of unsafe working conditions and heavy air pollution. Last explosion occurred August 21st, installing five injuries. Columbus dispatching code, the Liberty Casting has been cited for numerous OSHA safety rule violations since 2010, twenty of which were, were serious. It's fast, the pollution is concerned, Liberty Casting is by far the worst, and either in the city of Delaware, worst than all other amenities of pollutants combined. Even though Liberty Casting has received significant state grants installed, better filters, scrubbers, also not known as fumes, in 2016, Delaware's air quality has not improved. The left, the Liberty Casting in its own daily basis, has caught countless people to suffer from headaches, business, nausea, vomiting, and asthma. We have, 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 we have,[1168.82][1168.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1175.82][1175.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1182.82][1182.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1189.82][1189.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1196.82][1196.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1203.82][1203.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1210.82][1210.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1217.82][1217.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1224.82][1224.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1231.82][1231.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1238.82][1238.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1245.82][1245.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1252.82][1252.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1259.82][1259.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1266.82][1266.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1273.82][1273.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1280.82][1280.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1287.82][1287.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1294.82][1294.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1301.82][1301.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1308.82][1308.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1315.82][1315.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1322.82][1322.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1329.82][1329.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1336.82][1336.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1343.82][1343.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1350.82][1350.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1357.82][1357.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1364.82][1364.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1371.82][1371.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1378.82][1378.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1385.82][1385.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1392.82][1392.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1399.82][1399.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1406.82][1406.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1413.82][1413.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1420.82][1420.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1427.82][1427.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1434.82][1434.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1441.82][1441.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1448.82][1448.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1455.82][1455.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1462.82][1462.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1609.82][1609.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1616.82][1616.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1623.82][1623.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1686.82][1686.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1693.82][1693.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1707.82][1707.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1735.82][1735.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1798.82][1798.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,[1805.82][1805.82][S16, we have, 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 we have,
And we've settled on a bank that is going to provide us with all the capital that we'll need. It will raise enough equity to do the project. So we've submitted our final application to the Housing Finance Agency. They're under review there. We would expect in January, probably the Housing Finance Agency's board will act on all of these applications that went in for 2018. And once we have that final commitment, we'll be able to move forward with our interview general contractors, qualified contractors. And we expect to put the project out to bid in January, and we're looking for an April construction start.
That's awesome.
There are many peoples, community, that are glad to know that this type of housing is going to be added to the community. It will be a very nice looking project. It'll be well-run and it will meet the need that I'm not sure anybody else is working with me.
Any other comments, questions?
If I could interject you as a comment, if you don't mind. And you can address this if you'd like better, but I just want, in the effort of transparency, in your packet has essentially the engineering drawings that were submitted to me a month ago, along with the rest of the development plan. And then some brief discussions prior to our meeting on the phone with the engineer and the architect. The grading plan that is in the packet and then the engineering drawings previously submitted might change slightly just to accommodate the final requirements, the final design of their ponds. And so I just didn't want anybody to think that, you know, something was different than what you saw tonight. The main retention pond will be in front of building A, as currently shown. And then I believe we're talking about maybe some very small detention areas and another open space on the site. So if you would want to address that.
I can address that. When we did the initial location for the stormwater ponds, we didn't have any kind of final engineering done. And we did that final engineering for that. Since we had kept so many trees, the tree preserve, we found out that that pond's going to be a little bit too deep. And I didn't like the aesthetics of that, particularly in front of that building. So we kind of worked out two other places so we could raise that pond up so it's not very deep in front of it. And we can have a nicer aesthetic appeal both to the people that are in the buildings and people driving by the buildings. I just didn't like the way that it ended up. So we appreciate it.
And from an engineering standpoint, we're completely okay with that. And that's, that's great. Mark's opinion.
So you've been able to review the 14 recommendations from staff and comments or concerns with those?
No. No, I don't have any.
I'm just so thankful that I know you guys went through heck trying to get to the city council, all the meetings, all the negative, and this is such a positive thing that you're doing. I'm so glad you stuck with it and it's going to be great for Delaware. So thank you.
We know you all have a job to do, but we appreciate you working through the process with it was a process.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the community this evening that would like to comment on this project? I see that there is none. What is the wish of the commission this evening?
Make a motion to approve 2018-2673, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
I have a motion from Mr. Holter and a second from Mayor Riggle. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Holter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonnick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Congratulations. Moving on to item three.
KC 2018-2612, a request by Realco Enterprises LLC for approval of a combined preliminary and final development plan for Raising Canes encompassing approximately 1.485 acres at 720 Sunbury Road on property zone B3 PMU, Community Business District with a planned mixed-use overlay district.
Yeah, in 2006, Landmark Commons was constructed and over the years, there's several outlots and some of them have been built upon. And I think this is the second one this year that's, that's going to be constructed. The applicant is proposing a restaurant on this site. You see it's fairly flat out there. There's, it's just an open piece of ground. The engineering drawings are currently being reviewed by our engineering department. Access to the site would be from the internal access road within the development only. There'd be no direct access to State Route 36, 37 or Mill Creek Crossing. Staff does recommend that the existing curb cut be shared with the future outlaw to the east and also that an easement agreement occurred between Raising Canes and the future outlaw to the east where they can connect internally to each other to utilize that curb cut. And it'll also be a responsibility of the future outlaw to the east to construct that, that, those roads. The almost one and a half acre site would yield the 3,200 square foot building with a drive-through. Drive-through would be on the, window would be on the southern portion of the site and the pickup window would be on the northern portion of the site, adjacent to 36, 37. There would be a dumpsters, two dumpsters on southwestern portion of the site. And there'd be 53 parking spaces for the development. Only 44 would be required. It's a pretty large site for this, for this development. So there's a lot of, a lot of green space on this site. There is existing sidewalks along Mill Run Crossing. Staff is recommending that a applicant, or is proposing to install sidewalks along the internal access road, which would be the southern portion of this site where you can walk internally from this site to the other outlaw to the east in the future. From a tree replacement perspective, there does not appear to be any trees, qualifying trees on this site. Well, when Wood Shopping Center was constructed, they installed a street trees on 36, 37, but not along Mill Run Crossing. So applicant has to install a street trees along Mill Run Crossing and the typical front yard trees, interior lot landscaping and foundation landscaping and parking lot landscaping. They are required to put parking lot landscaping on the southern portion of this site adjacent to the internal access road. This plan doesn't show, but it's a condition that they do that. Signage, they're proposing signage on all four elevations. This has frontage to 36, 37, Mill Road Crossing and the internal access road. Staff who supports signage on three of those elevations, the eastern elevation, which doesn't, is not adjacent to the road, staff recommends that sign be eliminated. From a lighting perspective, they're proposing eight light poles that will be 22 feet in height. And actually today, the, our chief building official approved the lighting plan for this development. In the building itself, you'd say it's a mixture of limestone and brick. Looks very nice. It's got a flat roof on it. There would be a, there'd be screening of any mechanical equipment with a fence on the top. You can see the two elevations. It's, it's really a nice building. Nice materials are used in, brick and stone throughout the building. Staff recommends approval with 10 conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chairman, members of the commission, just say that, as you know, you don't get the benefit of seeing the iterations that we go through with an applicant as we're working with them on various codes and the site. It's fights is to say that Raising Canes, we've had a lot of conversations with them. This is not the first building they propose. They proposed a very nice building to begin with. I think this is even an upgrade over that in terms of architecture and materials. But the bottom line here is that we have a pre-existing shopping center with an existing planned unit, planned mixed-use overlay zoning text that goes with it. This conforms in all respects to that text and represents, the good news is that we might all be hungry right now if you didn't get dinner before this meeting. Bad news is you couldn't have brought us in food anyway. We couldn't, we couldn't have eaten it. But the good news is that this would be really the first outlaw restaurant in the Global Commons Shopping Center that I know the community has, I've heard from the community a lot, they've been waiting for restaurants, sit-down, fast food and everything in between, particularly at this center. So appreciative of working with us and your interest in the city of Delaware. This is one of the businesses that I hear a lot about from the community, being interested in coming into our community. So I think the citizens at the end of the day will be happy to have Canes in, in the city. And I think the fire chief's comment was, how quickly can he open? Happy to answer any questions right now.
Questions for staff? The applicant like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Drew Gatliff, Raising Canes, Ohio. Address is 1062 Ridge Street, Columbus, Ohio. And we were obviously excited to, to be here. And so I want to start it off with that. As far as the site plan goes, you know, that's something that we, we did work with them quite a bit on, you know, adding some additional green space. And with the proposed, the access drive on the east side of our property, we're more than happy to enter into an agreement so that there's not multiple curb cuts along there to keep that, you know, restricted access to those outlots. We will, we're more than happy to get that agreement in place. With all the conditions that they recommend were amenable to all of them. As he mentioned, the, the building through quite a few iterations, this will be very, a lot more concentrated than what, what our prototype standard would be. And so encompassing the stone, which isn't something that's normally on our building. So we're very excited about that. So those materials and how it would be fun to do any other. But I'm here for any questions that anybody has as well.
Why didn't you bring chicken? I haven't had it, but I just keep hearing one every time.
Every time we get that question. But if we did, it would be cold and that's, and then it's a problem.
Good my voice there. I'm very excited that you're coming. I've heard over and over and over when we're going to get a Canes. I've made the mistake of talking to a senior at Ohio Wesleyan last week and told her, she was asking me what was coming and oh my gosh, so excited. She says now I'm a senior, now that, I mean, really?
Should probably graduate before it gets done. If she's senior.
There's a good chance that that'll happen. That's all I want to know.
Is there, did you mention there was outdoor seating? Is there outdoor seating on?
There is. Yeah, and it's right, yeah, where he's pointing there.
Okay.
The hatch pattern is a patio. It's actually a covered patio as well, which is, we've gone through a recent design change for the entire franchise, which adds a outdoor patio. They're based in Texas and so they're very popular with, they want all of that. And so we're excited to have it. We just know it's going to be, you know, limited. It's not going to be in full months out of the year. So we have that, that patio is off the, off the front, right there.
So it's just, there's a covered overhang then? It's not enclosed with like the roll tops?
Correct. It's not enclosed and they haven't mentioned anything that it would ever be enclosed. There's no access directly from the building. So even if it were, it has to remain open on one side. But yeah, it, it, it's just a covered, there's a, an awning, a steel awning to protect, you know, from weather, but not.
And what's the normal hours of operation?
Typical hours of operation are 10:30 to 11:00 on Monday through, Monday through Thursday, or Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, usually open till I don't envision us being open any later than that. Anytime we do have that is when we're in close proximity to, you know, a large university that's within maybe walking distance or something. And we're just not, we're not there. So we don't anticipate ever being open, you know, having those later. And if we do have those later, it's usually 1 o'clock. Only on rare occasions, Ohio State's campus, we're open until 2:00 or 3:00. So that's not what we're envisioning here. That's not a normal community location. Our community locations are usually close by, just still.
So the different iterations that you had to go through, bring forth, was that because you were struggling with the, what the franchise requires and what we as the city require, especially in that location where, I mean, you're coming in, you're, you know, very visible coming into the city and we always want to make that, you know, look at and provide a very good first impression?
Agreed. Yeah, so there was a lot of back and forth with our franchise. As I mentioned, they're based in Dallas, but so adding the stone, originally we had the, the stone as the water table, the three-foot water table. And then I believe we showed Ephesus initially for, for the tower. And what we, what we knew we needed to get rid of was the Ephesus and how do we do that to keep that accent? So that those, what we don't want is one building that has all the same material and there's, it just gets very bland. And so providing that with the stone gave us that opportunity to provide those, as those architectural features that they are and with a different material. But that was really the main part of it was making sure that they were okay with, with the use of that much stone and getting their buy-in on that.
If everything goes your way and you get approved and build some, build this, maybe they'll come up from Texas and get an idea that, hey, we, we need to start building something like this.
That's right. Yes.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Thanks for coming in.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? See none? Turn it over to the commission. What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve 2018-2612 combined preliminary and final development plan with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Proll?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonnick. Mike, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Holter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonnick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Congratulations. Item four on the agenda, plan directors' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't have much this evening, except to say that staff has been hard at work with the conference plan update. We're kind of into a heavy analytic period with land use, getting existing land use for the entire community, starting to think about future land use and some of the implications of that, in addition to starting some of the economic development analytic work. There's some housing analytic work that goes along with that as well. And of course, digesting our Phase One, our focus on future workshops and input. We received over 1,300 separate comments. Yes, I have read through every single one of those and I very much appreciate that. I think it's very important that we as staff read through all of those and obviously our consultants and we digest everything the community had to say. We tried to meet people where they were in a variety of ways. Appreciate everybody's time in volunteering, including Dean, who's on the steering committee, but he volunteers time anyway and we appreciate that. Stacy, Bob, George, and all the steering committee members. We are continually impressed by the committee that we have. It's a very thoughtful group and representative of the community. And so tomorrow night, we have our third steering committee meeting and we will cover a lot of ground in two hours with a lot of information. And then another pretty heavy period over the next month and a fourth steering committee meeting in December that will cover some even more land use oriented ground. And then I think we're going to have to take a little bit of a pause, obviously. And I think we're going to have to take a little bit of a pause, obviously with the holidays and the end of the year, but also just to kind of take a pause from that heavy period and reflect a little bit upon what we've heard, some of the direction of the steering committee, and do some additional analytic work, and come back and really get ready to hit it hard in 2019 and hopefully drive to the next parts of that process. But so far, it's been good. The, the comments received were numerous and good relative to what we require for our planning process, but also for community, our size and a process like what we're going through. So thank you to the community too for participating, and hopefully everybody can continue to participate. I know it's a little bit different and difficult upfront to do that. It's not quite as direct as, should we build a road here or something like that. Those kinds of things and policies will come with public involvement as we develop the plan. But this part, I think, was important too, and I was particularly impressed with the diversity of Delawareans we had at tables at the face-to-face meetings who may not always get a chance to dialogue with each other and have perhaps even very different viewpoints. And they were able to sit down and dialogue about what they thought their greatest opportunities for our community were and our, our weak places and our strong places, and have a little bit of an exchange of ideas, which is ultimately the, the goal of the entire process, and to set ourselves up for goals, objectives, and strategies in our, everything that we do and what, what we'll encompass in our conference plan in the long term. Ultimately, that will pay dividends to applicants like Raising Canes that's in front of you tonight so that they have a clear understanding of the expectations of our community in all respects. So that's, most time applicants will tell you, we would much rather if it's clear and we know where the path to success is than if it's, you can't tell us. So even if maybe it costs a little bit more in stone or something like, so we appreciate that. So that's, that's important stuff to let you know and appreciative of your efforts. Stay involved in that and ask me any questions as always, and send citizens my way as well. I've had a number of conversations on the conference plan and happy to continue to do that. Lance, do we know what's proposed for December at this point?
Right now, we have four cases. Fay Hay Bank will be coming in. There's, county's building a, building an fairground, and Blue Sky Car Wash will come in for their preliminary approval, and Heatherington Section 8, that will be, and that's the final section of Heatherington, and maybe one more subdivision. Glenn Ross, one may come in.
Other than that, there's nothing happening. So the, the beat goes on for Delaware, which is ultimately a good thing for our community. I think we'll all be ready for the holidays and a little bit of a break, frankly. I'm not sure we're going to get one. I will tell you that I've done some numbers in terms of permits and what have you through the end of October in preparation for city manager's budget to city council as per usual, and some projections to the end of the year, and some thoughts about maybe what next year could look like. I will tell you, I don't have the numbers right in front of me to tell you. I will get those to you as soon as we're, we're done with our process and the administration. But so far, it's, in many respects, a record-setting permit year, as you, as you felt, you know, and we've talked about, particularly in the single-family details, but overall even in residential structures dating back to a number of permits that's greater than even past '05. We're back beyond that, and we're talking about, you know, in the top six, seven of all-time records. So pretty significant, no matter how you slice it. Again, ultimately, growth is a good thing, as long as we continue to manage it well as a community. I've been in the alternative, and that is not fun, so we don't want to get there. But appreciative of all your efforts. You guys played a big role in that, and we've had a lot of difficult cases. I feel like we should have a planning commissioner staff holiday party or something. Let's do it. Have some Raising Canes and whatever else, some Coca-Colas or something, and pat each other on the back for good work. Appreciate us, staff.
Thank you, Dave. Wanted commission member comments and discussions, start down here with Mr. Vonnick.
Just congratulations. You guys just keep knocking it out of the park. And for Canes, I live right across from there, so that's a win for me and my neighborhood. So thank you very much. Good spot. So, but seriously, you guys worked really hard. It shows week in, week out. It feels like week in, week out right now, but month in and month out, and it's, it's awesome. Very proud of this place.
Thank you.
Ditto on the staff comment. I noticed they paved the lot at Garage 36.
Yes, they did.
That comment came up three or four months ago, and I just drove by there today and saw it. Looks better. Now if we can get a couple of trees in the lawn strip.
Everything's prosperous. Progress, anyway.
Mr. Holter?
I didn't hear.
Didn't hear much from you today.
Well, you know, it's a good job. Don't have much you complain about. When they do their job, I'm quiet.
Can't make a better comment towards staff than that.
Thank you, we're good.
Move on, right before he thinks of something else. Mayor?
I know planning works there very hard, and I appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate.
Fire Station 304 is coming along very well. See, I haven't driven by that lately.
It's looking really nice.
Yeah, starting to look real nice. You start to see the HVAC, and the electrical company's now parked outside, so you know you're getting into, now we're getting somewhere. Wow, this was quick and easy, really. It wasn't that challenging tonight, but we had real, really three very well-prepared applicants and staff presentation, so because of that, makes all this work that much easier. So thank you very much. With that adjourned at five to eight.
It's not 10 o'clock.